Okay, there we go. Adequate notice of this meeting of the zoning board of adjustment was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and CoStar, our official newspapers on August 5th, 2020, and copy of the notice was posted at the municipal building and on the borough's website. Okay, we'll take roll call, Mr. Hutchinson.
Here.
Mr. Malango.
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Palmasano.
Here.
Mr. Capoli.
Here.
Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Mr. Lisco.
Here. All right, good evening and welcome to the August 27th, 2020 Board of Adjustments meeting. Will you please join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll take care of our administrative notes first. Can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the July 23rd, 2020 meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg and Mr. Malango.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hutchinson.
I'm staying.
Mr. Malango.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
I'm staying.
Mr. Palmasano.
Yes.
Mr. Capoli.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Lisco.
Yes. Thank you. Can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the July 28th, 2020 meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg.
Second.
And that was Mr. Malango again, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hutchinson.
I'm staying.
Mr. Malango.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
I'm staying.
Mr. Palmasano. Thank you, froze.
I froze up.
Yep, all right. Mr. Capoli.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Lisco.
Yes. All right. Next up, we would normally do our three resolutions, but due to a scheduling conflict with Mr. Kennedy, we're going to table those to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we're going to move right into our first applicant discussion. And unless I'm missing something, we're going to discuss the application for Lucille Barbetta and Benjamin Kirsch at 903 Ocean Avenue.
Yes, if I could, Mr. Chairman, could I just make a few comments?
Please, and if I could just remind all the board members to mute your microphone if you're not talking.
First up, good evening to everybody, and for those of you who weren't on a little bit ago, I introduced you. I have unfortunately a scheduling conflict tonight, so I apologize, I'm going to have to dump out early. But I have on our screen here, you'll see Kevin Assadi, he's a local attorney in Red Bank, works with me on many matters, and land use attorney, and on top of that, a nice guy. And so he's good enough to fill in for me tonight, so I thank him for that, and he's briefed as to the situation. There was one thing I wanted to review real quickly with you all before I jumped off, because this is sort of a unique situation, I didn't think it was totally fair to dump it in Kevin Assadi's lap, although I'm reserving my right to do that should we have to, should it come to that. But this is, and I believe April, this is dealing with the Lucille Barbetta and Benjamin Kirsch application, 903 Ocean Avenue, unit number two. So we have a very unique procedural situation here, and it's, at the risk of becoming engaging in a spoiler alert, I'm going to respectfully recommend that we not hear the application tonight for the reasons I will say momentarily. I will say that the applicant who is online tonight with us does wish to proceed. So obviously, we're going to have to address that. So what I would suggest, if it's acceptable to the chair and acceptable to the board, is that we just in, you know, 10 or 15 minutes, just address the procedural information so that you all can decide whether or not you wish you are going to recommend that we adjourn it so they get more information, or if you say, no, no, I'm satisfied and we can proceed tonight, and then we can just push them back, you know, to after we do the other application. But I just wanted to address this procedural issue, Mr. Chairman, before I left, because it's sort of exploded over the last, you know, two days or so, so I have a lot more information to talk about. So is it okay if I discuss the information?
Please do, Mr. Kennedy, thank you very much.
So this is an unusual situation, and I don't mean unusual bad, it's just unusual, and it's a complicated situation, and it's a unique situation, which, like I said, just sort of, you know, came to the light over the last couple of days. So, and it's a potentially significant issue with regard to the association. As you know, typically, when there is a condominium unit involved or a townhouse unit involved, the association signs off on the project and just says, yeah, we're allowed to do it. And we haven't had that many condominium projects, but we have had several over the years, and that's standard. And so I think two days ago, April and I talked, and we found out, you know, hey, there's an association. And I said, oh, April, please advise the applicant that they need confirmation from the association that they're allowed to do that. And, you know, the whole bunch of things going to that, the factors are, you know, what their bylaws provide, you know, what their common area regulations are, all those types of things. So two days ago, April got back to me and said, hey, by the way, here's the association information. The association basically said we're okay to proceed. So I thought, great, and I thought that was the end of it. But then I got a phone call from April a couple hours later and said, turns out to be that there's two associations here. So again, sort of a confusing situation, but, you know, we'll deal with it. But after a bunch of preliminary research, I spoke with the applicants at length and the applicant's husband, their attorney, Benjamin. I spoke with the attorney for one of the associations, and I spoke with another attorney who was calling on behalf of the president of the other association. So it's a whole big issue of who has jurisdiction, and do we need, well, let me say that the scenario is apparently, and again, this is all information that I'm learning over the last two days. Apparently, all nine units in this complex are part of the Ocean Breeze Condominium Association. And they do have an attorney, and like I said, I did speak to that attorney. Now, within that eight-unit complex, there is what we'll refer to as Unit 3, which in and of itself has five condominium units inside that structure. And apparently, that is what I'm told, those five units have formed another sub-condominium regime, sub-condominium association, and that association is called 903 Ocean and Belmar Association. So right off the bat, it's a little bit procedural tricky, but we have Ocean Breeze Condominium Association, which is all nine owners, and then we have a separate sub-association for 903 Ocean and Belmar Association, which is just those five unit owners. It appears that the five unit owners in the 903, what I'm going to call Association Number 2, have endorsed the project to go forward, but it furthermore appears that the Association Number 1 has not endorsed the project to go forward. So it leads to a little bit of jurisdictional issues as to who has the authority to control that. Is it Association Number 1 and Association Number 2? Is it just 1? Is it just 2? Or is the answer, it depends on where the improvement is located, is it in a common area for, you know, whatever, a whole bunch of factors? So these are, I spoke to the association's attorney yesterday, just called him out of the blue, he was a very nice guy, took the call, and he said, you know, basically, and I don't want to paraphrase him, but he said something to the effect, I don't know what the answer is, that's a good question, we have to do some research on that. And I, anyway, so we have the issues of who is involved in this and who has to be involved. So my concern, and it's a potentially big issue, is, you know, that we need additional information and approval and/or confirmation. Again, my involvement in this just really started happening two days ago, and it's sort of a complicated matter and a unique matter and a bit unusual, sort of all to just sort of be happening over the last, you know, day or so. So I would respectfully think that we need more information. I don't know exactly what information that we would need, but I just think that we need something more. And, I mean, people started shooting me bylaws of the association, and I started reviewing them. But again, we as a zoning board, we just have jurisdiction over variances and site plans. You know, we really don't have these issues over jurisdiction, I mean, over association matters. So my recommendation was to get more information. And I spoke with the applicants today, and it was just, again, it all started yesterday, the applicant and I played phone tag, but we did speak about two or three hours ago, when she was very nice and we had her Benjamin on the phone with us. And the applicant does, you know, I explained to her what my concerns were, and she was concerned and anxious about it, totally understandably. And, you know, she was not inclined to adjourn it to get more information, because she says, I don't know what more information that you want. And I said, well, I don't know what more information that we want, but, I mean, you gotta, you know, we have to figure this out. So anyway, it's just, I know Benjamin did call me back just an hour ago and said, you know, they want to proceed tonight. So I think we need to discuss this, and we can either say that the board can determine if they want to hear this tonight, or if they want to hear it at the next meeting when information regarding the association is obtained, or at least more information is obtained. Or, you know, anyway, so that's one of the things that we have to decide. And like I said, it gets a little complicated because of the unique factual situation and the unique legal situation, and the fact that apparently one side is okay with the project moving forward and another side is not. So respectfully, it's a little bit of a mess. And what I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, and again, we, I wouldn't have this more than a, you know, five-minute conversation, is I think Mrs. Lucille Barbetta did want to speak, and after that, we can determine whether or not proceed. And if we do proceed, we'll just, you know, come back to it later on tonight. Or if your thoughts are, don't hear this, you know, we need more information, we'll tell her now, and there's presumably some people in the public who are interested in this application. And just for the record, though I'm recommending that it not be heard, I am not in any way offended if we don't, I mean, if you don't follow my recommendation, that is totally, you know, I just want to make sure everyone makes a fully informed decision. So, Mr. Chairman, would you want to hear, again, not substantively, but just procedurally from Lucille Barbetta?
Mr. Kennedy, I mean, for my two cents, I would personally follow your lead and your recommendation on this. If I were just to put that out to the board, is that procedurally acceptable for what we're doing here?
Yes, I did suggest that at least Ms. Barbetta would be able to, you know, briefly just announce herself. But yes, I mean, absolutely, it is your call, absolutely.
Okay, I mean, does any of the board disagree with my thinking or would like to hear from Ms. Barbetta? Would like to hear what she has to say, or do you want to take our attorney's recommendation as is?
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, as this might make clear that I'll be recusing myself from this application, as I am the neighbor and in the mailing circle.
Thank you, Mr. Malango.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with hearing it tonight, so whatever you guys decide, I'm fine with it, but I have no problem hearing the application tonight.
Mr. Chairman, and I'll defer to, and Kevin, thanks for staying on, you know, I know you got to go. But, you know, if the tenor of what we're going to discuss tonight is modified based on the fact that there's two associations, doesn't the notification situation raise a question? Because, you know, if I was part of that other association, you know, I would like to be able to come here and be heard tonight. So if we hear from the applicant, do we also have an obligation to hear some counterpoints or other points and then actually begin? Like, I'm not really clear about letting the applicant speak, and I'm not, I'm happy to let her speak, so please, you know.
Absolutely, I understand.
Don't misunderstand, it isn't a question of speaking, it's a question of equity in terms of if she speaks, are we on our way into having the discussion? Because what's the purpose of her sharing this information with us? What's the intent if the legal decision, if the legal decision is, there's a secondary association and it's unclear? I get uncomfortable if we start beginning a process in a public hearing and let the applicant speak. But again, I'm curious what she's got to say, but at the same time, legally, Kevin will turn to you and say, you know, if you're recommending that we not be heard tonight, shouldn't we vote on that first? And then, if we say we'll be heard tonight, then be heard. I mean, I don't.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent point, and what I would respond to that is yes. And I think ultimately, we will have to ask the applicant at least, because if we're not going to be heard tonight, and we're going to carry it to a date certain so that the applicant doesn't have to renotice, we would at least need, on the record, her consent to extend the timeframe in which the board has to act. And if she didn't grant that, there would be, I guess, a discussion as to whether or not you wanted to dismiss the application without prejudice, but hopefully, it wouldn't come to that. But no, it's, like I said, I understand the angst and the frustration of the applicant, and it's a confusing situation, and obviously, you know, I didn't, we didn't create the situation. And, you know, presumably, when people bought into this, they either, you know, consulted with their attorneys or their title companies or their lenders, or when the association decided to condo, go condominium, they presumably had representation as to what it means and all those things. So it might be that no additional information is necessary, but I think additional information is necessary, and I agree with your concerns that once we start into it, you know, we are starting down that road, and that does implicate other avenues, I do agree with that.
Anyone else on the board with any thoughts?
Yeah, I would like to say, it seems as though every time we get into something that there's some questions about it, we get in trouble. And I would like to say, we'll follow Kevin's recommendation and not hear any part of this case. When we do hear, we'll hear the case in its entirety.
I would agree. Okay, so.
All right, John, didn't mean to cut you off, are you talking?
No, thank you. So that would, thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. And what we would do is probably, April, we should bring Ms. Barbetta on, not for purposes of discussing, but just for purposes of having her consent to extend the time. And if she does, we'll just carry it to a date certain without the need for any further public notice. And if she can't consent or doesn't consent, like I said, we'll have to take it to the next level. So April, could you maybe bring her on for that limited purpose?
Yep, they're coming on. They are.
Good evening, Ms. Barbetta.
Good evening.
Okay, and just for the record, is this Lucille Barbetta and Benjamin Kirsch?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay, hello, good evening. So we would normally swear you in and things like that, but we're not getting to that, you heard the discussion.
Yes.
I tried to save it both ways, and so I guess the question would be respectfully, are you in a position, knowing what my concerns are and the board's, majority of the board's concerns, are you okay to adjourn this to a date certain without the need for any further public notice? And I guess the main part is, we would need you to consent to extend to the timeframe within which the board has to act on the matter.
Yeah, I'm not, that's fine, but I did want to just say that the other association was notified, so.
Yeah.
I don't want to make it like they weren't notified, so.
No, and I didn't mean to imply otherwise, so thank you for that. I know it's anxious, anxiety-provoking to be involved in an application, and I don't know what the answer is as to what additional information that we need, but I will certainly help you in any way that I can. So April, what would be the date by which the new hearing would be?
September 24th.
September 24th, 2020, and is that a remote meeting?
Um, yes.
Okay, and is that at 6 o'clock?
I'd like to keep it at 6:00 if everyone's still okay with that.
Okay, and so what we would do, Mr. Chairman, with the applicant's consent, we would adjourn this to that meeting, what was April, September 24th?
Yes.
Without the need for any further public notice, pending further information from the association, associations, to clarify that information. And, Mr. Chairman, if that's acceptable, we could have a motion.
Okay, I'll make that motion, could I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg.
All right.
Mr. Ross had a question.
Oh, that's all right, we can vote, and I'll just ask it afterwards, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any one opposed?
Same.
All right, and if I could just say for the record, for those individuals in the public who are interested in this application, you're not going to get another notice, so please come back on September 24th at 6:00. And April, I think we had one other adjournment, didn't we?
Yes, hold on one sec. Okay, so the application for Lori and Kevin Gildea, 208 Seventh Avenue, that was one we heard last month, and we had carried it to this meeting because there were some questions about whether or not they had to comply with flood regulations. They did some more research, and they decided to hire Mary Hearn as their architect to help them with the renovations they want to do. So they have requested their application to be carried to the October meeting without renoticing. That way, they can work on the plans with Mary.
And I would just, April, could you give the, do you know the October meeting date?
It's October 22nd.
October 22nd, and I think we have to say a time, 6:00?
Yes.
Question, Ms. Chairman or April, was that the one where we had a question about the 50% valuation as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I think the board needs some sort of legal guidance relative to the definition as part of that, and I don't know if the burden is on them.
Yeah, Christine Bell, the floodplain administrator, was going to attend the meeting, so she could be here to answer those questions.
Okay.
All right, do we need a motion to carry that?
Sure, we should do a motion to carry that, again, with confirmation for the public that there'll be no further notice of this, this is their notice. So if anyone's listening and has a friend who might be interested, let them know. So, Mr. Chair, the motion is to carry the Gildea application to October, what was it, April?
22nd.
22nd, 2020, 6:00 PM, without the need for any further public notice.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, I'll make that motion, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
All right, is that the end of your?
Yes.
Work, Mr. Kennedy, thank you very much for handling that.
Thank you, guys, I'm sorry I have to dump out. And Kevin Assadi is familiar with the Mandy application, so he'll take it over from here. Good night, guys.
Have a good night.
Night, Tab.
All right, with that, welcome, Mr. Assadi, and we will bring our first applicant forward. It's Louis Mandia at 1708 B Street.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to go over procedural history on this matter. For the record, Kevin Kennedy has briefed me on it, and just for the purposes of the record, I'm going to read that in. The applicant was scheduled to be heard initially on June 25th, 2020. There were some concerns with the initial notice that was provided. The board then accepted jurisdiction but required partial renoticing. The issue there was that the Lake Como portion of the 200-foot list was not noticed. The applicant reappeared on July 23rd. The notices to the Lake Como residents were sent, however, there was a problem apparently with the white slips. Having been left blank, there was no way for the board or council to confirm that the notices were proper. So the matter was further adjourned with the understanding that supplemental notice would need to be presented to those who did not receive notice previously, and here we are tonight, August 27th, 2020. For the record, is there anyone here who has any questions or comments regarding the supplemental notices they received? Anybody from the public?
And we'll ask April to monitor that. You know, April, one thing Mr. Kennedy always has us do is announce a way to get in touch with you, whether or not they can get through this Zoom call?
Yes, they can send an email to clerk@belmar.com if they are having problems communicating on here.
Thank you, and did you see anybody raising their hand to discuss the notice?
No.
Okay, thank you, I think, Mr. Assadi, that closes that question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm also advised that Mr. Kennedy spoke with the applicant's attorney and the board secretary and confirmed that the supplemental individuals who were entitled to receive notice did receive notice. So at this point, notice is proper. Now, although there have been appearances on two prior occasions, there has not been any formal testimony, so we're starting brand new, and if any board members who are present tonight were not present for any of the prior meetings on this, that's no issue at all tonight. So with that, I believe we should swear in Mr. Bianchi.
Go ahead, Mr. Assadi, Mr. Bianchi.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, to the best of your ability?
I do.
Okay, and your name, please?
Ted Bianchi.
Okay, and you're the zoning officer for the Borough of Belmar, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and next order of business is to mark a few items into evidence. Doing this over Zoom, is Claudia going to be marking these items? April, I'm sorry, April, are you going to be marking these items into evidence? I have the development application dated February 17th, 2020, to be marked as A1. The minor land use zoning permit dated July 7th, 2020, A2. Floor plans and elevations by Tekton Architectural Studio dated April 19th, 2019, consisting of one sheet, A3. Plans provided by Jaclyn Floor, P E P P, dated December 31st, 2019, consisting of two sheets, will be marked as A4. It is our understanding that the properties located in the boroughs are 40-zone. Is my further understanding that there are two structures located on one lot? It's my further understanding, and Ted can confirm this, that the prevailing municipal ordinances, under those ordinances, two principal structures are not permitted to be located on one lot, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And I further understand that one of the previously existing structures was damaged by fire and then subsequently demolished, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Was that the building in the front or the building in the rear?
It was the front structure that got burned down.
Okay, and per Ted zoning permit, the application requires a use variance approval for non-conforming use, bulk variance approval, and other relief. So we can hear the applicant's first witness.
Hello, how's it going, Mr. Mandia here. So I made my plea and required meetings as well.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, I have to swear you in first, are you the applicant?
Yes, sorry about that.
Okay, no problem, what is your name?
Louis Mandia.
Okay, Mr. Mandia, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Mr. Mandia?
Hi, yes, I do.
Okay, and state your name again, please?
Sure, Louis Mandia.
And can you spell your name?
Sure, L O U I S, last name, I'm is a Mary, A N D I A.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and begin explaining to the board your presentation?
Yep, so alongside of me, I have my attorney Nicholas Gonchar, as well as my architect and engineer, Costantinos, as well, who can speak to more of the variances and the technicals and specifics. who can speak to more of the variances and the technical specifics for the proposal. So in short, and I know I've mentioned this on prior calls before, you know, I've, you know, I plan on being a long-term resident of, of Belmar Township. Obviously, my family and I see the wonderful things that the township's been doing and the enhancements being made to the, to the neighborhood. My proposal is pretty simply put, in the front house, I'm planning on, I have a newborn on the way. Going to be moving in with my fiancee as well, and we plan on building a beautiful big home in the front for us to subside in full-time as a permanent residency. And I feel like neighbors in the township would probably appreciate that, just given, given, you know, certain activities over the past summer with renters in the front and the, in the back home. It's a headache that I necessarily do not want to, nor do I have the time to deal with anymore. So once, you know, once and hopefully I get the approval to, to build my home, you know, those, those, those activities can, could easily go away. So I appreciate everyone's time today. And if anyone has any specifics regarding what exactly structure I'm looking to build and put in the front lot, like I mentioned, my architect and engineer Konstantinos is on the line, as well as my attorney Nicholas Gonchar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandia. Mr. Gonchar, did you want to give us a presentation on what's happening with the, with the project, or how did you want to proceed here?
So I was hoping to just go forward. I want Lou to, I wanted him to present, and you know, for the architect, architectural aspects, I want my engineer and architect to take that over. So I, I plan on sitting on the background to watch everything over. Just overall, I'm glad that tonight we're finally able to, to present as opposed to the last two attempts.
Us as well, thank you. Would then, if that's the case, would you introduce the architect to us and give us his, maybe have him give us his credentials?
Sure. Ms. Konstantinos, would you like to jump in and introduce yourself? One second, let me see.
Don't want to mute.
We got two. If you can, just unmute yourself as Konstantinos.
Hello?
There you are. Sir, can you raise your right hand?
I won't be, I'm not swearing in as the architect. Our principal architect, Caesar Bustamante, is on. He's going to be the one testifying on behalf of the architectural testimony for the company.
Okay, can he come up, come aboard then?
Yeah, Caesar, are you on? He was trying to log in a few minutes ago.
I don't see anyone with that name.
He should be logging in any, he had some difficulty trying to log on. He just texted me that he's logging on as we speak.
There is someone here that's by phone, but I don't know if that's him or not. I only see a phone number.
I'm not sure. He just texted me a few minutes ago saying I'm trying to log on.
If he's in the room, he can hit the raise hand button, so I can find him if he's under a different name. Doesn't look like it. No, I don't see anybody.
Why don't we give this a couple of minutes while they straighten out the technical issue?
That, that sounds good to me. Thank you.
Looks like we're getting close. Good evening, Caesar. Can you hear us?
I now can, yes.
Excellent.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please spell your name for the record.
All right, my name, first name, Caesar, C A E, S A R, Bustamante, B U S T A M A N T E.
Okay, and what, you're the architect for the project, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Have you testified before any land use boards before?
Yes, I'm not in Belmar, but I have done other, other townships.
Other towns in Monmouth County?
Yes.
Does anybody have any objections to Mr. Bustamante?
No, we'll accept those credentials. Thank you and welcome to Belmar.
Thank you.
Okay, it's your floor.
Yeah, go ahead. You want to give us a presentation?
Certainly. You know, we were hired to do a rebuild of the house on 1708 Avenue B. And basically what we do is expanding it to a two-story house rather than a ranch. You know, we meet all the codes. We were not exceeding the square footage, but we are asking some variances because we do not have all the setback requirements that are required for the township. You know, we feel that the house would be an asset to the neighborhood. And, you know, I'm not sure whether or not everybody agrees with it, but, you know, I think it's, it's a nice design and it's given the neighborhood a nice look.
Can you, can you walk us through the setback deficiencies and just let us know what those are?
Sure, let me.
And just for the clarity of this presentation, could, could you maybe discuss a little bit of the history of the property? It was, it's, there's, there's two structures on the property, is that correct?
That is correct. There's one in the back that was not damaged, so that's remaining as-is. And one in the front has been torn down. There's nothing on the lot, and we're going ahead and building a new two-story house. And, you know, I don't know if you've seen the drawings, but basically, we have a covered porch with the family room, the, you know, the entire, let me see what it does. I don't know if I can share it with you.
We do, let me just ask you a couple of questions here with, with respect to the back house. Do you know how many bedrooms are in that building?
That one, let me.
And Mr. Mandia, you can answer as well.
Yep, it's a, it's really, it's two, it's a two-bedroom, but I think, I believe it's used as like a one-bedroom and storage room.
Okay, and how many bathrooms?
One, one bathroom, one full bathroom.
One bathroom, okay. Okay, and the, the former front house, how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms?
Yep, three-bedroom and one full bath.
Okay. Okay, and then the proposed front structure, how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms?
Caesar, you want to go ahead and answer that?
Hold on, let me take a, take a look at that. The front structure has, I believe, it's hard to, newer on the zoom, but okay.
I believe it should have four. It should have one master, it should have one master there, right upstairs, Caesar?
That's correct. There's a bath upstairs. There's one, two, three bedrooms, master bedroom and two bedrooms. And on the lower level, there's another bathroom and another bedroom.
All right, so I hear three bedrooms and two bathrooms, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yep, with, with upstairs being the master bedroom.
And if I'm looking at that plan correctly, it looks like there's a bathroom, a bedroom on the first floor. So that would actually make it four bedrooms and one master bed, bathroom.
Correct.
Bedroom, I'm sorry. Four bedrooms, and then there's three total bathrooms.
Including the.
Including the master?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and Mr. Mandia, when, when did the fire occur?
The fire occurred February of 2018, February 2018. And then by the time I was able to work something out with the insurance company in order to get the property demoed and maintain, and maintain it, that was around, call it December of 2018. So it took roughly, almost an entire year in order for me to start working with the insurance company and the, the adjuster in order for me to demo the home and start prepping it for, to hopefully be built.
Okay, and then when was it actually torn down?
It was actually tore, it was torn down within the same month of December of 2018.
Oh, well, so in December 2018 is when it was torn down. Fire in Feb. 2018, torn down in December 2018.
Yep, that's right.
And it's been vacant ever since? The front, the front portion of that has been vacant since?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Now, I think that's the background that we needed.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a couple more questions about the rear structure? What was, do you know the square footage of that structure?
Yep, the square footage should be, I think it's roughly 1050, I believe. It should be about 10, yeah, 1050.
Do you know what the original square footage in the original structure was?
For the front home? Yeah, I believe, yep, it was either 1250 or 13, I feel like it was an odd number. It might have been 1310.
Okay, and the proposed structure, what's the square footage on that?
1715.
1715. And do we know the heights of these structures, Mr. Bustamante?
Yes, let me get that for you. The height, we're going to two stories, so let me just get you the right dimensions. Total to the roof ridge is 25 feet in height. First floor is eight foot, then twelve inches for the floor joists and everything. And, yeah, 25 feet to the top of the ridge.
And I, I believe you went through this, but just for my notes, I want to make sure I have it correct. The rear structure, it's, is that a single story?
Yes, it is.
And the number of bedrooms on that structure?
Let me see, I don't think I have that. I think it's.
It's two, it's, it's two bedrooms.
Two? And how about bathrooms?
One full.
One full, okay. What about, so there's two structures. Are there dedicated parking spaces for each structure? What's the, what's the proposal for off-street parking?
Yep, I have, so the property line states that the, it, I would say it's about a three-car driveway. And right now I share it with my next-door neighbor at the current moment as well.
At the current moment, is that scheduled to not be the case at some point?
It, I mean, it's more of like a, just like a neighborly mutual, like, favor, if you want to call it that.
Whose property does the driveway?
My.
The driveway's on.
My property. Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, and it's typical for the applicant to give us a list of the variances that they're requesting as they're kind of walking us through what they're proposing here.
Certainly. The variances that we're looking for are, I think we're submitted by the planning. So we're looking for, I mean, we have the zone, the minimum lot size was originally 4,000. The proposal is 3,300, so we need a, it's an existing variance though, so, yeah, I don't know whether, that's something, it's, it's an existing non-conformity. Same thing with the minimum lot frontage is, we, it's required by code to be 40. We have 33, that's another, you know, existing non-conformity. Minimum front yard setback is 20, we have 4.3, that's another existing non-conformity. Minimum side yard setbacks, five foot, we have two foot eight, that's another existing non-conformity. Minimum side yard setbacks, required is 10, we have 12 foot four. Minimum year, year, setbacks, 25, we have 49.8. Minimum rear setbacks, 25, we have 4.5, so that's an existing non-conformity. Minimum building height, 35 feet, we have 25 feet. Maximum building height in stories, two and a half stories, we have a two-story. Maximum building coverage, 30%, we have 38, that's an existing non-conformity. Maximum lot coverage, 55%, we have 65, 66% proposed, so that's another existing non-conformity. Maximum floor ratio, 78%, we have 64%.
All right, thank you. And I guess when you're saying, when you're saying we have, you're, you're giving us the, the, the proposed variances that you're looking for, assuming that the, the proposed structure is going to be built, is that right? Because existing, there's, there's no structure in the front.
That's correct. I mean, what it was before, before they, I guess they got demolished, but you're right, absolutely.
Okay. All right, and did you have anything you wanted to add to the presentation? What we'll do afterwards is we're going to open it up to the board question, to board members for questions and, as well as the public.
I know, I'll, I'll take questions if there's any.
Okay, and I guess we'll reach back out to your attorney, Mr. Gonchar. Was there any other presentation?
No, I think that, that covers it. You know, we're open to any questions and, you know, either Lou Mandia or Caesar can, can answer those questions as well.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll open it up to our board, actually, Mr. Assadi, is that acceptable to you? We're going to open it up to board questions at this point. Did we miss anything procedurally?
If that's their whole presentation, then this is the time to open it up to the public.
Excellent. Okay, with that said, we'll open it, well, we're going to open it up to the board members first. And why don't we start with Mr. Malengo? And I can remind all the board members to keep your microphone on mute if you're not the one talking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few questions for Lou Mandia. I would like to understand the, on the site plan, it seems that you have approximately 28 linear feet in the driveway for parking. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so at 28 linear feet with two cars, probably maximum in that driveway for parking?
I would say that's pretty fair. Yep, I mean, I only have one car myself, so, yep.
And the rear structure, will that be a rental property?
The rear structure, I haven't really decided yet, to be completely transparent and honest with you guys. I, as much as I would like to keep that as a rental property, it's definitely, it has been a handful over the past two years, having it as a summer rental. To, so to the extent that I do not have to rent that, rent that back home out and kind of keep that as a guesthouse, that would obviously be the priority. Obviously, there's a number of things that have to come into that, though, my wife or future wife, you know, getting back to work, me getting back into work as well. But I mean, it's, it's, it's an unnecessary stress I would rather not have.
Okay, I'm sure you're intending on paving that driveway, correct?
That's correct, yep.
So if it did turn into a rental property, that means the parking would be very limited, one for each structure?
Yep, I think that's safe to say.
My second question is, since we're going up two stories and I see the left side setback is very limited, is there any drainage system in place here?
Yes, that's correct. It's actually a brand-new drainage, excuse me, drainage system that was installed this summer.
And what type of system was that?
That, I'm, I'm not, I'm not too sure of familiarity with that.
Is it dry well?
I'm pretty sure it would be dry well. You know, we could take a look at it, and if you need more information, we'll get that information to you. But I would assume it would be a dry well system.
Okay, and the last question is, both structures share that deck that's between the structures?
Yep, that's correct, and that deck is going to be removed upon the, the rebuild of the front structure, so that deck's going to get removed.
So they will not be connected to each structure?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malengo. Let's go to Mr. Fitzgerald next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, how are you doing tonight?
I'm doing great. Were you talking to me or the applicant?
Yes, I was.
Thanks, Mr. Fitzgerald.
So, Mr. Assadi, could you please review for my purposes and perhaps other board members as well, what a D variance means and what the conditions for granting a D variance need to adhere to? I think that's really quite important for this case.
Sure, well, we've heard several variances that were also C variances, but we'll start with your question about D variances. A D variance, in this situation, what is pertinent is a D1 variance, which is a use variance, meaning that what's being proposed, the use being proposed is not permitted in the zone. What we're hearing tonight is an application for a second principal structure on a lot that had previously had two principal structures, but once that first structure was fully demolished, question exists as to whether that use is abandoned. So now when they come back for a request to rebuild a front house, the question is, does that trigger a D1 use variance? If the answer is yes, the applicant would have to show that special reasons exist as to why the board should grant those variances, and that's a term of art, and case laws determine special reasons would be those that would demonstrate that the lot is particularly and peculiarly suited for the use being proposed. We haven't heard a lot of testimony to those points, but it would be up to the board to make those findings if you wanted to approve the application.
So this is a D variance, right?
Well, I believe Mr. Bianchi has flagged it as a D variance, and if it's not a D1 use variance, it still would be a D, an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, if the board wished to look at it that way. And when there's an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, that's also a D variance, and the standards for that type of variance must be that the board makes findings that the lot can accommodate the expansion, and usually there's some kind of give and take in a situation where an applicant wants to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use. Usually, they'll also incorporate something into the plans that alleviate some of the problems associated with the non-conforming use in the first place. So however the board looks at it, those are the findings that you're going to want to make if you see fit to approve the application.
So if a structure, the structure that was demolished, if it was simply putting that back, they would have the ability to put it back as was because of that case, but expanding on that is triggering a D variance because it's a bigger house than the one that burned down.
Yeah, I think it's beyond debate that this is, at a minimum, an expansion of a non-conforming use, but you could also ask whether the use, the board could make a finding that the use was abandoned when it was demolished in December of 2018. You know, I'm not so sure that that constitutes abandonment under the municipal land use law, but Ted might have a better insight on how the borough of Belmar has been dealing with situations like that.
Kevin Kennedy, I said in the past, you know, abandoned use is a difficult concept to prove. This is really just the special reasons for the D variance, because what I understand about a D variance is that the positive criteria for allowing it to be built would have to outweigh the negative criteria, is that correct?
The, for a D variance, the positive criteria, the so-called positive criteria are those special reasons, and that's a very high burden to meet under the land use law. So if it were a C variance, the positive criteria is that the benefits outweigh the detriments, and/or you can, if it were an inherently beneficial use, you would satisfy the positive criteria, but for a D variance, they have to prove not just that the benefits outweigh the detriments, but they have to prove special reasons.
Right, so then I'd have to ask the applicant, what are the special reasons that would cause the board to vote to approve a D variance, because I haven't heard a case be made for special reasons?
If I may just say, before we get to that, I was listening on what you're saying, and I think I also spoke with Mr. Kennedy on this as well. I believe the New Jersey case law states that you need to, in order for it to not be grandfathered in, essentially if the house can fully burnt to the ground, however, in this case, it didn't burn to the ground, the damage was done, so we ended up taking it down. So I don't know if that changes whether it's a D or C, but I believe, like, given that, we would still be able to rebuild what was there, again, just trying to expand it to, similar to what the houses right next to ours, they did it as well.
Right, it's the expansion that creates the issue, so that's why I'm asking these questions about the D variance, and also, back to my original question, are you going to plan to make a case for the special reasons that need to be justified for us to approve a D variance, because you didn't really speak to the special reasons at all?
You know, all we were trying to do is, you know, maximize the FAR for the property, you know, it was a cape originally, and by making it a two-story, not exceeding the height limitations of the property or the zoning laws, we thought that that would make it a better property for the neighborhood. You know, if you look around the area, the house next to his is already a two-story. The one across the street, it's a wide ranch that's, you know, double lot, so I mean-
Do those homes, do those homes have a rear house as big and as close as this rear house is that you're citing?
Some of them I think might, but you know, if you look at the whole area there, there just seems to be a mix of everything. I mean, there's a lot of properties that are maximizing their lot, and you know, we're just trying to-
Mr. Mandia, you made a comment about, you know, you've had it with the back rental. I do know there was a violation recently, and it's also appearing on the animal house list. Have you taken any actions to try to bring your tenants under control? Because I know, and I don't live far from there, I know that the back property has been a problematic house, and I'm just curious, you as the landlord, the steps you've taken to try to take care of that problem?
Yep, great question. So I actually held a conference call with all of their parents and let them know, apologies about that, had a conference call with all their parents and let them know the current situation that they're in and the current situation that puts me in as an animal house. I've been renting it out for two summers. The first summer, I wasn't as familiar with the group of kids that were renting it. This summer, I was the family friend's daughter and her friends, so it made it a lot easier for me to kind of reach out to the parents and have that discussion with them, and had, I would hope that over the last, call it month or so, after I had that conference with their parents, that the house did begin to behave a little bit better than they did in the beginning of the summer. You know, and obviously, aside from that, you know, as far as security deposit and all that stuff goes, as far as, you know, renewing for next year, which, as I mentioned, would be my first intention, just given the amount of stress level that it is to have a summer rental there. You know, I did, and I even worked with my neighbor Doug as well, I'm not sure if he's on the call, but him and I have also been to the property several times to have, you know, to kind of approach the kids with, given the situation and the negative attention that it draws from the township.
Thank you. I take you at your word that you want to make this your full-time residence, and also that, you know, you would like to not continue the back house as a summer rental. Would you consider just putting a single-family house up on the lot and then make that your backyard? This would be a much easier application to digest, and I don't know if the other board members have seen the site, but it is, it is just, it's just, it's just overbuilding on a lot that size. You got problems with the driveway, you don't have adequate parking, you know, there's a problem with the curb cut. You know, I just think this would be a much easier application if you just said, you know, let us make this the single-family residence that you're talking about, and eliminate that rear house, problem goes away. And also realize that when the board grants a variance, it's not just for you as the current owner, but it's in perpetuity for any future owner. So we have a one-time opportunity to fix what is a problem by going forward and doing this the right way versus, you know, just hearing you out and say, maybe you'll rent it, maybe you won't, maybe it'll be a guest house, maybe it won't. Well, if you take it down, all those maybes go away. So I would just like to know, would you consider thinking about removing the back house, especially given the fact that you're looking for a D variance, and I don't know that the special reasons are being met?
Yep, great question. So my fiancee and I had that conversation as well, because I've said we took that into consideration. You know, to be quite honest, from both a business and as well as a personal perspective, right, I have two older parents, right, so they could always use the guest house, as well as siblings that could make use of the guest house. Plus, you know, during the summer months, right, like, I would also love that, given how close I am to the proximity of the beach, to have, you know, like, mature adults and friends of the family be able to, you know, stay in my guest house behind me, right, which I think enhances both the enjoyment of the property from a personal and business perspective as well. You know, I don't think necessarily I'd be looking to just knock down the back house as well, given other grants and approvals and properties around the neighborhood, right? And I think what should also get taken into consideration is, I didn't plan to have the front house, you know, demolished, right? That was a catastrophic event by cause of fire. So like, if it was up to me, I would have rather just had that proposal, had the house not burned down, came to the board with the proposal that I wanted to build up on the house, right, and kind of do like a large renovation to the front home, and, you know, take it that, and kind of go down that route.
So are you saying you will not consider removal of the rear house as an option here? You know, and I just, and I'm not comfortable with the potential promise that maybe you'll rent it, maybe you won't, especially since it's been such a problem house in the neighborhood. So, you know, I think we need clarity on that, like-
Yeah, sure. Yep, yeah, I'm more than happy to give clarity on it, right? I think that everyone on the board could agree, and people, and my neighbors on the call as well, that would agree that, you know, if they were in the situation that I was in with this opportunity, it wouldn't quite make sense from an economical standpoint to knock down the back house and just build one home on the property when I have the allotted lot size to, in fact, build myself and my family a beautiful front home, as well as keep a guest house in the back for family and friends.
But you're not agreeing that it's not going to still continue to be what is potentially a problematic rental?
Oh, no, that I agree with, yes. That I can attest to and I can agree with, yes.
What are you attesting to?
Attesting to that the back house, under the circumstance and the approval that I'm able to build that front, the front home that I'm proposing here today, that I will not rent out the back house for summer rentals for, to the age group of kids that have been currently renting the house for many years down the shore.
Okay, and did we get a good accounting of all of the variances? Like, it was front-side setback, side yard setback, lot coverage, building coverage?
And Mr. Fitzgerald, if I could jump in, just to follow on with what you were saying before we go down the road on the variance questions?
Okay, sure.
It's typical to ask a client if they're willing to make it a condition of the application to deed restrict that rear house from rentals. I hear Mr. Mandia saying that he would not rent it to certain age groups, but I don't know that we can really enforce something like that. It becomes a problem.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there's case law that says that, you know, conditions that are connected to land use approvals that deed restrict a property from being rented in any sense is avoid restriction and not enforceable, because it goes against public policy, it discriminates against people theoretically who can't afford to buy, and so now they can't even rent, and they've been found to be void restrictions. So it's not an effective way to control it, and I wouldn't recommend conditioning an approval on that, because you could run into that problem later.
I agree. John, I agree 100%. I think it's, what's being suggested there is not practical and couldn't be done. So, okay, so just, and I'm not sure if Ted, this is your writing, like, it came from you, but the notes that I had were front yard, side yard, lot coverage, building coverage, inadequate parking, driveway apron had an issue, the shared driveway potentially is an issue, proximity to the rear house could potentially be an issue because it's not just rear yard setback.
Mr. Fitzgerald, if you can hear us, you're breaking up a little bit.
Or the front house. Okay, I might switch to my phone. Okay, but I don't know that we heard the special reason, so I'll pass, especially if the audio is breaking up while I could, I'll connect with my phone.
All right, that's terrific, and then we can always come back to you for more questions if you'd like. All right, with that, we're going to move on, and why don't we move to Mr. Green?
I have a few questions. Ted, could I ask you, I know we've gone over this before, I just want to be sure I'm right. Driveway to be a driveway or parking place to be a parking place has to be 10 feet by 19 feet, is that correct?
No, it's nine by 20.
Nine by 20?
Yeah, the maximum width of a driveway is 10 feet. Parking space is nine by 20.
Okay, so he does have at least one parking place, I would say.
Right, required to have four.
I don't see four, but it looks like a walkway.
Three in the front, one in the rear.
Is that a sidewalk that's adjacent to house?
Yeah, and I didn't count, I didn't count that as a parking spot, so he's only got one parking spot on the property.
That's what I count, one parking spot.
Yeah, one spot, he's required to have four.
So additionally, the impervious coverage, Ted, is that, it says it's a stone driveway? I'm assuming gravel? I looked at the property today, I didn't really see it as gravel. And they're going to pave it, is that correct?
That's correct, yep, and most certainly is gravel. I actually gravelled the lot myself from my father. This was a little, two summers ago.
So you're going to pave it now?
That's correct, yep.
And if my notes are correct, it says you have 66% coverage, that means you would have some kind of grass area or something somewheres, which I don't see anything.
The whole front, I mean, remember, I'm picturing the pre-existing home in my head, there was a very large front lawn to that property. It was comprised of, again, it was a gravel, it was a gravel lawn with about two to three bushes on each side of the home within the gravel lot.
There was, but there's not going to be now. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Essentially, the plans that Caesar, myself, and Casatino came up with is very, very similar to a home. I believe it's on, it's right around the block. It's a very, very similar structure and architectural plans to that property.
Okay, still need an answer as to where there's impervious, or there is pervious coverage. Where in this plot plan should I see pervious coverage? Where will water drain down into the ground?
Caesar, would you be able to attest to that?
Let me, I mean, you know, we do have some areas that have the, on the lot itself, you know, there's some grassy areas in the front and towards the back, so there have to be some dry wells over by the back. Like I said, I don't know if we, if on the zoning, the original plan had any dry wells, but you know, those would have to be incorporated on here, make sure that it meets the drainage.
Honestly, I wish I could see 37% of this lot has grass or some kind of pervious land. It looks like it's all stone or concrete or building. There's a little strip down the side where the AC unit encroaches on the side yard, and I don't know what that is, if it's not marked, but I don't see, honestly, don't see 30-some percent of pervious land. but I don't see, honestly, don't see 30-some percent of pervious land.
So as far as grass area goes within the property, I personally plan to eliminate any of the grass area and replace it all with pavers, just for ease of maintenance, right? At least it would save me money from having to hire a landscaper come down, you know, bi-weekly for just such a small area of grass. I just felt like it makes the house look a lot cleaner and a lot, you know, a lot more enhanced, just having beautiful pavers instead of, you know, very tiny pockets of grass around the home.
Well, that's different than what my plan, that's different than what my plan shows. I don't see any pavers on my plan. And additionally, I have to, I have to agree with member Mark Fitzgerald that this doesn't make good sense to me. You said it doesn't make economic sense to remove the back house. To me, that means your intention is to continually rent that house. That's the only way it would not make economic sense. Well, honestly, I would like to see that if, this is too much coverage. This is too much house, too many houses, too much impervious coverage for me. And I'd like to see an agreement where you'll remove that back house and put a proper house for yourself and enjoy it and have a backyard for your family.
Listen, and I agree with you, and that does sound wonderful, right? And it's not a matter of me renting that back house anymore, right? Because, I mean, you could take my word for it, to the extent that I'm able to build that front home, I would prefer not to rent that back house out anymore. But while, you know, as a homeowner, right? And, you know, as a homeowner, and I don't know if it's 20, 30, or 40 years down the line when, you know, I would look to sell the home, why would I want to lose that optionality of having two homes on one lot down the shore, right? I mean, I'd be selling myself short of appreciation of my home value by removing that back house, and I think everyone could agree.
I understand what you're saying. That's the way you feel about it, but, you know, that's where it goes. What happens to it when you sell it? You say you're never going to rent it, or probably wouldn't rent it, but when you sell it, what happens then? We all know who's going to be, how they're going to use it. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll let somebody else have some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Fitzgerald, are you there? Did you have anything you wanted to add on now that you're on a different connection?
I don't want to harp on this, and I'm looking for legal guidance, but if this is a deed variance, the special reasons, we have an obligation to ensure that before we vote, that the special reasons to allow for the expansion to put up a bigger house, allowing all these variances and allow the rear house to stay, those special reasons have not been declared. And I just want to make sure that, from a legal point of view, that both the applicant and the board, as well as the attorney, that we're all on the same page, understanding that if this is a deed variance, and it sounds like it is, that there's an obligation on the applicant to prove those special reasons. Absent that, we can't vote to allow. So, Mr. Assadi, if I understand this wrong, please correct me, but that is my understanding, and I think we have to turn to you to set us straight, or please advise the applicant.
You're correct. The standard of proof that an applicant must meet is a threshold standard, meaning that if you find that the applicant has not met that standard, you actually don't even have discretion to approve it. It's only after the applicant has met that standard of proof that the board gains the discretion at that point as to whether it wishes to approve or deny an application. So theoretically, an applicant can come in, provide you with ample evidence that meets that threshold, and you could still deny because you're allowed that discretion. On the other hand, if an applicant comes in and does not meet that standard, and the board were to approve it, if somebody were to appeal that approval, they may have a chance at success based upon the lack of proper evidence in the record.
Very clearly understood, so could you please restate what that standard is? So both we and the applicant, because our hands may be tied based on what you just said, that if the special reasons haven't met that standard, it's almost like we have no choice but to not approve. So I want to get that vetted out now, because I'm afraid that we're missing something here, and I want to, and I don't want them to suffer because of lack of knowledge, is what I'm saying.
Well, I would offer, I have to note that most deed variance cases, you would have the benefit of professional planning testimony. And that professional planning testimony is usually what drives home, you know, the positive and negative criteria, frames it, provides the facts, and explains why those facts meet the positive-negative criteria tests. But we don't have professional planning testimony here before us this evening. It may be prudent to ask the applicant if they wish to come back with a planner, if that's what the board, it sounds like the board is finding a lack of evidence necessary to add.
I'm only speaking for myself at this stage, but Mr. Assadi is our attorney, right? Again, we would have to turn to you and say, does it appear that they've met the standard for deed variance, for special reason testimony? And I know that you're not voting, but you have to apprise us that it does not appear that they've met that standard, yet true or false? That's kind of where I'm at.
I believe that the standard has not been met at this point, and I believe that even if you wanted to act favorably on this application, I believe that approval would be in serious danger of, on appeal. If somebody were to.
All right, thank you, I just, all right, thank you for clarifying that.
Sorry, if I may.
I have no further questions, Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Fitzgerald, and Mr. Assadi, maybe I just wanted to clarify. We didn't hear any presentation on those special conditions, right? So that's why you're saying that you don't think that condition was met?
Correct, there hasn't been any testimony offered that goes towards the kind of planning, technical planning evidence that usually we would see. And it doesn't, that's not to say that a professional planner is an absolute requirement, but it's very difficult to justify a deed variance without it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr., oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just interrupt for one second? I see a lot of members of the public keep raising their hands, so I just want to let them know that there will be a public comment section later on for this application, and we'll make an announcement then. And at that time is when you can raise your hand and ask your questions or give comments. But until then, there's no need to click the raise hand button yet.
Thank you, April. All right, and Mr. Gonchar, did you say you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, I know Lou did testify earlier to the fact that it does, you know, having this house rebuilt in this manner, I mean, overall, it enhances the neighborhood, it brings up the value. I mean, I don't know whether it's true or not, but, you know, I've heard that Belmar is trying to get away from the party town and is trying to become more of a full-time, you know, full season, not just summer season, you know, family place. So, I mean, I think that does go to the fact, and maybe it wasn't said in enough detail, but, you know, it brings the value of the neighborhood up. There'll be a new, beautiful home within the area, as opposed to right now, there's an older home with a big sandy lot in the front. And, you know, I think that does go to the fact, maybe it wasn't said enough, but, I mean, if I was there, I would love to see, go drive through Belmar and see these new, beautiful homes, as opposed to sometimes there's older ones that are known to be party houses.
Thank you, Mr. Gonchar. Just with your notes saying you would think it would bring up the property value or the value of the neighborhood, I mean, I think what we'd like to hear is how the expansion of a non-conforming pre-existing use, you know, would bring, a two-family rental that's getting larger rather than smaller would bring up the property value of the neighborhood. I mean, you know, we hear that from planners and appraisers. Are you either a planner or appraiser?
No, I'm not.
Okay. And I think that's kind of where Mr. Assadi was saying, that this is kind of the typical testimony we hear, so that we hear from experts that can tell us why this is a good thing for the neighborhood, rather than, you know, our comments and thoughts that, you know, you might hear that Belmar is not a party town anymore.
Understood.
Thank you. All right, with that, I guess we can keep moving on with board questions. Why don't we go to Mr. Hutchison next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of things. The thing I'm really concerned, the things I'm really concerned about are such things as parking, the side yard setback on the north side, the lot coverage. I have to echo one of the other board members who said that they didn't see any grass or anything there. And if you do pave that driveway, I can't see any, except a 2.8-foot strip, the whole property, it could be grass, I guess, along the north side there. But if you're going to build a new structure there, I wouldn't be happy with anything other than a conforming setback. So that would have to be five feet on that side, on that north side, in order to be conforming. And I guess I would like to see the kinds of changes that would improve the existing non-conformities. I don't, you know, I'm really hesitant when I hear things like, well, if I have to bring somebody in to, you know, once the house is built, to maintain the property, that kind of says to me, you're not living there. So, you know, I'm a little bit worried about that. And the fact that there's no special reasons doesn't make me, doesn't make me comfortable. It seems to me if you really wanted to do the parking places, you could do the parking places all the way back to the, almost to the rear property, because you've got the same amount of room between the rear structure and the property line as you do between the proposed new structure and the parking and the property line. So you probably could fit, you know, at least three, maybe four cars into that area. I didn't see anything about the proposed front porch setback with the other setback of the other houses in that neighborhood, and seeing an average, and seeing how this conforms to those averages, which I, I don't have that information to make a decision on. But I have to echo what Mr. Fitzgerald said, and since we haven't reached the threshold of a special reasons, I don't even know how we can go forward with this until that's met, so. There's a few, there's a lot of comments and not too many questions about this, except the only recourse that I can see personally is to read, to get that rear structure down. So, there you go. Thank you, Mr. President, or Mr. Chairman.
I'll take it, Mr. President, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Hutchison. Next up, we'll go to Mr. Ross.
Sure, so I guess I might have missed it, but you said the, when did you purchase the home? Mr. Mandia?
Sorry about that, I purchased the home back in February of 2017.
Oh, 17, okay. Okay. I was just curious, because when I was researching the property a little bit, it looked as though you didn't, it wasn't purchased until 2018 on the records, but, okay, 2017. And so you testified that previously there was a three-bedroom, one-bath front house?
Yes, that is correct.
Did the existing, or the pre-existing front house, there was a porch on that, right?
That's correct, yep. Pretty large porch, yep.
Yeah, so is the current porch overlapping that porch? Or is it extending beyond where that porch is?
Great question, let me take a look at the site plans.
I can answer that, the porch is staying in the same location that it was previously.
So previously to the front porch was 4.3 feet? That was the pre-existing condition of the previous home, the front home? Because you testified that there was a large, there used to be a large grass yard in the front with some bushes, and 4.3 feet doesn't seem like that much to me. Hello?
Well, from the plans that we had drawn, it's basically exactly the same as it was before. So we haven't changed anything.
Okay, so I guess the statement then that it was a large front yard is, I mean, I guess maybe that's just subjective, but I was, maybe, I was trying to think if I was missing something, because 4.3 doesn't seem too large to me for. I'm still trying to wrestle with how we got 33% grass there, as Mr. Greg pointed out, so. All right, I'll move on. So I think we've talked a lot about the water, but I don't know if we've gotten a definitive. Where does the water go? The runoff?
Yeah, that's not shown on the plans, so, you know, we'd have to provide some drywall somewhere to show you.
If we want to, I think in my mind, if I want to proceed with the application tonight, then I would like to know where the water is going to go tonight, if we're going to vote on it. That's like something that I don't know, is if I'd really be comfortable knowing where it was going to go in the future, considering the amount of hardscape that's being proposed.
Understood, I mean, I don't know if the, you know, if the owner would accept maybe some pavers that are drainable on the driveway all the way down to the back. So this way, that would be an impervious surface that would drain the water down. We could add that to the plan.
Where does the water go now?
It's just into the ground, wherever there's grass areas, you know, it just soaks it, then it gets into the street. So, I mean, not doing any worse than that, where.
But there's no house there now either, so I guess previously it didn't go anywhere to a base, and it just rolled right off the land onto the street?
Yeah, you know, the property, where it was before it got demolished, but obviously, nothing has changed, and I don't think, whatever the way it was, it's been like that. So if we propose to put pavers that would, you know, let the water drain into that 9 foot 4 by 97 feet of property, that might solve the problem for the waters in previous water.
Okay. And then I'll just ask the question, why can't you build what was there before?
Well, I think the reason they wanted to go ahead and expand is, you know, they want an extra bedroom upstairs and make it a nicer house. I agree, you know, with the back house, it is the existing house back there, and, you know, it's the shrink to tear it down.
Yes.
But you're right, I mean, we're meeting all the codes. We're not going above the FAR, we're meeting 25, 35 feet in height, you know, same footprint. All the variances that were there, not reforming, we're keeping to those, and those that we're asking to have acceptance on. But again, you know, it's up to you guys to decide whether or not that's something we need to get the planners involved to come and give.
So you're 2.8 feet from the property line on the one side? So I guess I'm trying to understand how that benefits the neighbor, now that you're going to extend upward.
For years, you know, the property's been like that since the house was built back whenever it was, you know, before it got torn down, so.
Right, the lower, right, lower? How much lower was it previously?
I believe that was about maybe 15 feet, so we're going up 10 more feet.
10 more feet, okay. I'm just trying to understand what the benefit is. I understand the benefit to the applicant, I'm trying to understand the benefit to the neighbors.
Understood. Yeah, I can't, you know, it's really for the neighbors, it might get less light, you know, I can't.
That sounds like a detriment, I'm asking what the benefits are.
For the owner, that's the, yeah, the benefits are for the owner. He's getting a nicer house, he's getting something that'll give him a nicer.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm trying to tickle out some reasons here as to how this is in the best interest of the community at large. So what I think I keep hearing is that it will benefit the owner. Solely. At this time. What types of, what types of materials will be used for siding in the front porch?
Well, there'll be typical materials that are used down in the shore, foreign siding, similar to what's on the other neighbor's house. All similar materials that keeps it vernacular of the properties around. All similar materials that keeps it vernacular of the, of the properties around.
So the railings on the front would be synthetic or wood or what?
No, no, I mean, you know, everything we propose is similar, it's going to be wood, similar to what was there.
Wood railings on the front?
Yeah.
So the, the client was worried about mowing the lawn. Do you think he is equally as worried about maintaining wood railings?
I mean, you know, you have to keep with the, with existing in the property. If, you know, we haven't really gone into that much detail with the, with the mowing the lawn. But, you know, that's what we propose. So if there's something that he doesn't like, he hasn't, you know, we can take that off.
Lou, are you proposing wood railings? I'd like to know. And what kind of siding, vinyl siding or wood siding? I heard wood.
I think Mr. Mandia dropped off.
I think, I, I'm, I'm looking to see, he may have just, I think his phone may have died, to be honest. Trying to get in contact with him to see where he went.
Okay. See if I.
Hey, Mr. Ross, why don't we just hold off until Mr. Mandia returns?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we want to take a quick break while he's doing that? Or do we want to keep going forward or sitting here waiting?
That's a good point, Mr. Capoli. I was hoping it could be resolved here in the next minute or two. But, yeah, you want to take a 10-minute break while the applicant tries to figure out the technical difficulties?
Yeah, gives him a chance to do what he needs to do.
It, it's 7:38 now. Let's meet back at 7:48.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Acted with him, so I don't know the status yet. I don't know if it's proper or if it's allowed. If we can possibly, if, if there's a continuing issue with technical difficulties, requesting a adjournment or postponement till the next, the next date?
Okay, why don't we hold on till we're back on the record and that'll be our first item to discuss?
Okay.
Mr. Melango?
Here.
Mr. Capoli? He's on mute, but he's here.
Thank you.
Is also here. Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Lisco?
Here.
Mr. Greg?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
And Mr. Fitzgerald.
Still here.
All right, so we're back on the record and Mr. Gonchar has advised that we can't get in touch with Mr. Mandia, most likely due to some sort of technical difficulty. Is that right?
Right.
Mr. Asadi, I don't know that we can continue without the applicant. Do, do you want to weigh in on, on whether or not that's proper? Or I, I, I guess the, I guess Mr. Gonchar is asking that we adjourn. I shouldn't put words in your mouth. Mr. Gonchar, in, in the absence of Mr. Mandia, are you, are you asking to adjourn or postpone this meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll take that to Mr. Asadi. Is that, is that reasonable and acceptable?
Yes, I, I would ask that the applicant's attorney please confirm that the board's time to act under the applicable statutes is extended to April, what's the next date that they could get on?
September 24th.
September 24th. So why don't we say October 31st for formal board action, which gives you time to act and then adopt a resolution?
You requesting to October 31st?
Requesting an extension of the board's time to act October 31st. So this is your adjournment request?
Correct.
But you, you just heard that they can put you on the agenda for September 24th. And so we just need that on the record.
Okay. So just at this time, due to the technical difficulties, Louis Mandia, the applicant, was disconnected from today's webinar and meeting since the time he was kicked off or disconnected. We have been unable to get in contact with him. So at this time, we're requesting a postponement until the September 24th hearing.
We needed, we're requesting an extension to October 31st because what happens is if the board were to take action on September 24th, then they would convene at the next meeting and adopt a resolution. And that may constitute the board's formal action. So we need, we need an extension to October 31st.
Okay. And we're requesting the extension to October 31st.
We're just, I'm, I'm just asking for your consent to extend the board's time to act to October 31st. Is that good?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I see some members of the public are still raising their hands. I know they have some concerns about wanting to speak on this application and it's being the third meeting and they haven't had a chance to speak. So I don't know if you or Mr. Asadi want to address that.
Mr. Chairman, why don't you? It's your, I'm not the regular attorney. So why don't you make a statement if you wish?
Sure. Given that the applicant is, is not on this, this call anymore, I don't know that we can hear the public. I, I know that there are a lot of people from the public that want to speak on this. And through every one of our applications, we'll have a portion where the public is available. But I, I don't know that we should hear anything more on this application without the applicant being present. You know, it, it's just a function of our, our Zoom meetings and our, our meeting protocol that you'll have to continue to attend the meetings if you want to speak on this application. The next meeting is September 24th. And if I'm correct, Mr. Asadi, the applicant will, will not have to re-notice for that meeting.
Correct. This announcement satisfies the notice requirements. Unless the Zoom link and meeting ID and all of that, if that's going to be different information, then they would have to re-notice. But I'm not sure, I'm not very tech savvy, so I don't know. April is the meeting ID, meeting passcode, all that technical data that would have been in the notice that was received.
What we've done in the past is carry the applications without them having to re-notice everyone within 200 feet. But I, as the board secretary, do publish a meeting notice for each meeting that has the agenda and the new Zoom information. And the new Zoom information is posted on our website for anyone that wants to get in.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, I guess with that, then we're going to look to adjourn the meeting. But, but maybe if I could just offer, Mr. Gonchar, before we go, I've heard a lot of common themes in the board comments. And maybe it's worthwhile taking a look at your application. And if there's more information that you want to present when you come back, maybe consider that to make this application a little more maybe clearer for the board to understand what you're trying to do.
Of course. Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Say, we'll use, we'll use the time, unfortunately, I don't, I don't know what's going on with the connection, but this is the stuff we have to deal with, with technology during our times right now. But we'll use the time wise in the next month or so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just so we all are clear, I know it's 208 Seventh Avenue, correct?
208, oh.
No.
No, 1708 B Street.
1708 B Street, got it. Okay. I guess the public, do they need to be reminded what we're, the property that we're doing? I think not, right?
I think we just, we just reminded everybody.
Okay. Okay, what, we're carrying this then to another night?
Yep, so I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to request a motion to adjourn this meeting and, and carry it until the September 24th, 2020 regular meeting. Can I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, in a second?
Second.
That was September 24th?
That's right.
Thank you.
So that would be all in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nope.
Okay, that'll do it, Mr. Gonchar. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Sure. All right, April, was there any business we needed to care, take care of before we adjourn?
Uh, no, I think that was everything.
Okay. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. And a second from Mr. Fitzgerald.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.